All right, we're ready to go. Water, uh, call to order for Watertown City Council meeting for April fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. Please rise while Hank Rosso, the Watertown Fire Rescue Chaplain, along with a lot of other titles that he has, uh, will lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, as we come to you this evening, we want to say thank you. Thank you that you have allowed us to be in part of this great community, Watertown. God, I thank you for each one here that take good care of us, the police officers that are here and the firefighters and the paramedics, Lord, that watch over us. God, I thank you for each one, that we've got such a beautiful city. Um, I was in recently in a city that was filled with garbage, and I know we take for granted even our garbage service. So, God, you're good to us for all these things. Thank you for our city council and our leaders, and we thank you for the unity and the common bond they share at the love for Watertown. We ask your blessing on this meeting now, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Tupper?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Holene?
Here.
Jerrance?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Thank you.
Quorum is established. Chair has to make a couple changes to the consent agenda. Item D is going to be pulled and placed last on the agenda for tonight. Item F is going to be pulled from consent and placed first on the agenda for tonight. And I also have to add an item to consent, which is authorization for the finance officer to issue a special check in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to Carico Law for monthly services per the contract. Just break with etiquette for just a moment to comment upon consent agenda. Finance Officer Bob Zine or City Manager Mac, would you like to just explain, uh, just real quick what this is?
Thank you, Mayor. That particular invoice just got missed for processing. So it needs, it needs to be processed, or we have to wait until the next meeting.
And that is a regular payment, correct?
Correct.
Yes, so that is a regular payment. So just to explain if anyone has any question on that item that I'm adding. Okay? If there's no further conversation, I will ask for a motion to approve today's agenda with those changes. Motion made by Councilman Peters and seconded by Councilman Shuddy. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're on to the first, I, uh, yep. Just wondering where public, oh, open forum. Sorry, missed open forum. If there is anyone here who would like to address the city council on something that is not on today's agenda, now is your time to do so. Anyone here? All right, I will close open forum, and we will go to item F from the consent agenda, which is authorization for the police department to declare K nine Police Narcotics Dog Sadie as surplus due to retirement and donate to Sergeant Cody Trum. We have Osif- or Officer Beauchamp.
And Sadie.
Hey Sadie.
You want to just take her up there? Good evening. As mentioned, uh, I'm Captain Ryan Beauchamp with the Police Department, and I oversee the K nine unit. And, uh, we're here today for authorization, police department to declare, uh, Sadie, uh, surplus and, um, to donate her back to Sergeant Cody Trum, who was her original handler. As you can see, Sadie's pretty excited. That today is her last day of work. I have a little bit of background information if you would like to hear a little bit about Sadie.
I would call for order in the court, in the quarters, but I'm not sure if Sadie would listen.
You can try.
But by all means, go ahead.
First, I'd like to start by recognizing the remarkable service provided by, um, Sadie, who is a Dutch shepherd. Uh, Sadie came over from the Netherlands, and I believe she has a passport and everything. She is, like I said, a Dutch shepherd. Uh, she's been an integral part of our department for nearly eight years. Uh, Sadie has played a crucial role in numerous drug enforcement operations, directly contributing to the safety and security of our community. Her efforts have not only led to significant drug seizures, but also made Watertown a safer place for everyone. Uh, Sadie's retirement marks a bittersweet milestone for our department. Uh, while we are sad to see her retire, we celebrate her successful career and her positive impact. Her president, her presence has been more than just operational. She's a beloved part of the community, um, helping to strengthen the bond between the police and Watertown residents. I know Sadie has been to many schools, daycares, nursing homes, assisted living centers, um, events, camp chants. Sadie's probably met thousands of kids over her career, and, uh, they love her and she loves them. So, uh, we are asking that Sadie be declared as, um, surplus, um, and then donated to Sergeant Cody Trum, her original handler. So after the meeting, if Sadie is declared surplus, Officer Crown will, uh, deliver Sadie to Sergeant Trum, and today will mark Sadie's last day on duty.
All right. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize Sadie's retirement. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Bueller. I will just say that I hope Sadie isn't acting up because she smells something in the chambers. But with that said, uh, any conversation on that? Councilman Danforth.
The only comment I have to say is procedurally, we have to declare her as surplus. That's an inappropriate word at this point, so.
Councilman Tupper?
Uh, Sergeant Beauchamp, is there any, do you got any big stories to tell about her, any, anything in particular that? Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, Officer Crown and Sadie, who is Officer Sadie, we do, um, our K nines are officers in our department.
Yeah.
She did, uh, uh, sent to the, to the, uh, order of narcotics and three ounces of, uh, methamphetamine was located, which is a, a substantial amount. And she was able to, uh, work with Officer Crown on that to, uh, get that off the streets and get it out of our community.
Thank you.
Nice. Any further comments? I'm just going to call it authorization for retirement. So all those in favor of authorization to retire Sadie, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Sadie.
Thank you.
Yeah. We will go to item nine A, an authorization for the city manager to execute the bid award for the type one ambulance with McQueen emergency in the amount of roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the bid award to Stryker in the amount of ninety seven thousand dollars for ambulance equipment. City Manager Mac, please illuminate this.
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed at the work session last week, uh, we're bringing this request forward due to long lead times, uh, and trying to maintain the budget numbers that we put into place for two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, the capital improvement fund budget, excuse me, will be set in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, this falls within that. Uh, for specific questions, we have our Assistant Chief Youngblood here, um, who can answer questions about the equipment and the, uh, ambulance itself, um, but we do recommend approval. We'll get this ordered right away, and we'll see delivery sometime in two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize the, authorize and execute the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Jerrance, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Let's open it up for any conversation, council. All right, hearing no questions or comments, we will just go to a straight-up voice vote. All those in favor of the authorizing and executing, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item nine B is an approval of a bid award for the two thousand and twenty-four Airport Tea Hangar Foundation, project number two four two two, two Castle Rock Construction, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this project is related to, uh, the tea hangar out at the airport. Uh, you may recall, actually, a couple of years ago now, a pretty severe storm came through Watertown and surrounding areas, uh, which severely damaged, uh, the city's tea hangar. Um, we have, uh, bid out the building, and it's been awarded under the amount received from insurance and FEMA. Uh, this is, um, sorry, I lost my spot on the, on the sheet. Uh, we did receive six bids for this. Castle Rock Construction out of Desmith is the lowest bid in one hundred and eighty-four thousand, which is twenty-seven percent lower than the engineer's estimate of two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, I will stand by for any questions, as will our Public Works Director and Assistant City Manager.
All right, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the bid award. Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Bueller. Open it up for any conversation, council. Councilman Tupper?
Uh, either one of you can answer this, it just, I get lost in my directions when I go up to the airport. So is this the building that's just directly, if you were facing the old terminal, the one to the right of the old terminal?
Public Works Director Van Ey?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. This would be directly to the, uh, northwest of the old terminal. So if you're facing the terminal from the tarmac side, it'd be to the left. If you're facing the terminal from the front doors, it'd be to the right. Correct.
So is this a total reconstruct then, or?
Uh, yeah, for the area that blew down, now the building, if you recall, that was awarded sometime back here, a couple months ago, month and a half ago. And there was, we were in a little bit of a transition to get the foundation work within either insurance or FEMA funding. That's why this had a little bit of a leg to it, but now the whole thing will be brand new, that, that portion of those tea hangars that blew down.
Yep, thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the bid award. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay, Tupper? Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item eleven A is an application for a transfer of ownership and location of a retail liquor license and video lottery license from Studio two twelve Doing Business as Studio two twelve LLC to APO LLC Doing Business as Sandy's Bar and Grill. And we will open, take it to City Manager Mac for more information.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, fees have been paid and a notice of hearing has been published. Uh, the applicant did receive a conditional use approval from the Board of Adjustment for a bar or tavern in the C three Highway Commercial District on March twenty-fourth.
Thank you very much. I will open up a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to testify on this item? I'll close the public hearing, take it up for council action. I need a motion to approve the application for transfer. Motion made by Councilman Bueller, seconded by Councilman Peters. Questions or comments, council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the, to approve the application for a transfer. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item eleven B is an approval of resolution number twenty-four dash ten, a vacation of the east three zero nine four feet of an eighteen-foot driveway eastment on the platte of Lester Hansen Outlots between Broadway Street North and Maple Street North. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer to Public Works Director to speak to this item.
Director Van Ey? Director Von I?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager. Yeah, this is a, we would compare this to a utility easement vacate or it's kind of similar to right-of-way vacate, only it's not formal right-of-way. What we've got is a, a private driveway easement that was established sometime back. I've shared my drawing to teams here. I don't know if that's on the map or not, but if it could be shared. And this portion highlighted with the red cloud is what would be vacated. The owners of this property are wanting to do a building expansion on here and in order to best accommodate that, they wanted to prohibit the through traffic that this easement otherwise allowed for. We did take this, staff took this through to the planning commission and they reviewed it and made recommendation for approval, I believe unanimously, to allow for this vacate. Adjacent property owners to the west that would obviously receive benefit from this easement were also present in those discussions throughout this process and been notified of this vacate. Those properties would still have an appropriate access easement coming from the west, so they would not be landlocked if this were to be approved. With that, I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll open up a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am, I should be speaking.
Yes, and make sure that the green button is lit up.
Jim Roby, Attorney. I represent Don and Janet Rorick, the owners of the property and the petitioners for this vacation. We really don't have anything to add to the petition and materials and the decision made by the plan commission, but we're here to answer any questions. Janet Rorick, Don and Janet's son is here. Also Dustin Flattin is here. They are principals in active heating, which will be renting and using the property. As you might know from the map, that's where active heating is presently located. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify at this public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, open it up for council action. I would like a motion to approve the resolution. Motion made by, there was a whole lot of people. I'll go Councilman Danforth and seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for comments. Councilman Danforth?
I need to make a statement quickly first, and then I do have a question of Mr. Von I here. So I do want to disclose that I do have an actual family relationship with Mr. Flattin that's here. And I am confident that the, the information will guide my decision and not that relationship, personal relationship. I'll ask Ms. Caracol if, if it's her advice that I recuse myself because of physical family relationship or not. I would, his father is my cousin.
I, I have absolutely no issue with that.
But when we're done, he may not talk to me at Thanksgiving anyway. So, so if I can, Mayor, with?
Yes, by all means.
He tried to explain to me, I'm not sure I understand. I read through this earlier today. I'm not really sure. So this isn't an alley like we normally would have an alley in town, or is it?
No, it is not. It's not a planted alleyway.
So it's, it's not a right-of-way per se, an alley right-of-way that's been designated and used for years? It actually just is a, an access easement?
Correct.
And so what we're doing is saying negate the, the easement is all we're saying at this point?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, all right. That makes sense.
Just the easterly half of it.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Peters? Any other questions or comments?
Mayor?
Director Von I?
If I could also make a note, it's in the, it's in the documentation here, but we would also be retaining the necessary utility easement that would be required to protect the underground utilities running through here. That, of course, does not impede the project or the intent of the land use in any way and the applicants were fine with that. So just wanted to make that point.
And I would just like to say thanks to the plan commission. They gave this a very thorough hearing at their last meeting. It was a lot of good questions for that one. So hearing no further questions or comments, the action is to approve the resolution. All those in favor will say aye, opposed, say nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Tupper?
Aye.
Dan, or, sorry, Buhler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 11C is an approval of resolution number 24-11, necessity for sidewalk improvements along 7th Avenue Southeast with the 2024 Neighborhood Street Reconstruction Project. City Manager Mac?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm going to defer to Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director Von I.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager. I'm trying to locate a couple of drawings here quickly. So we have before us here another resolution of necessity for potential inclusion of sidewalk in a city reconstruct project on 7th Avenue. This, uh, this particular area. Share my screen so you can see the map. Um, it's, it includes about three blocks worth of street reconstruct of 7th Avenue. In that reconstruct, we are doing something similar to what we were doing up on 12th Avenue with kind of a right sizing of the roadway, if you will. If you've driven this anytime recently, you'd recognize there's a oddly wide segment of pavement through there with sections of it, they have curb and gutters, sections of it that don't. So anyway, all that'll be cleaned up and put together in an appropriate way according to our engineering design standards through a full street reconstruct. If you recall, we also discussed this location at a previous work session and contemplated the inclusion of sidewalk in here. After that work session, we went ahead and brought forth a resolution to include sidewalk on both the north and the south side of the street. The reason for that is after that work session, we went back through what we currently have for, as objective criteria available to us to try to discern whether that north side would be appropriate to exclude or not. And the criteria that we typically base an exclusion on simply weren't checking the boxes. We wouldn't be negatively impacting any driveways or prohibiting the use of any driveways by including a sidewalk. We've got adequate right-of-way width to include the sidewalk here. There's no constraints in that regard. All the other physical constraints, as far as there wouldn't be any necessity to build any retaining walls or any grading issues as far as setting a sidewalk grade. Those are three of the primary objective criteria that we try to use when we're looking at inclusion of sidewalk in our projects. This map here also shows in the orange lines all the existing sidewalk. So you'll see on the south side, there's a couple of those blocks that already include sidewalk. And then north-south extensions all along here, along these three blocks that also include sidewalk that you'd be creating connectivity to. With that, of course, with any resolution of necessity or potential assessment, all the landowners have been given the proper notification according to state statutes. The city would apply our in-kind donation or cost sharing, if you will, for sidewalk costs, which helps bring that cost down to the landowner. I don't have off the top of my head what that cost per foot is, but I'm sure it's in the summary and we could look it up if that's a question that we need detail on. But with that, I'd stand by for any questions, along with City Engineer Peterson, who's in the crowd here with us.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve this resolution? I'll allow it. We will do a public hearing, sorry. Yep, if you want to come on forward. Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Just identify yourself, please.
My name is Lori Benson. I own the Kinsman Insurance Building on the corner.
Yeah, make sure that the green light is on.
Oh, thank you. My name is Lori Benson. I own the Kinsman Insurance Building on the corner of 7th Avenue and 4th Street Southeast. And I just guess I would like a clear understanding of what's being proposed. Everything from the corner to my parking driveway is, currently got curbed, no, no sidewalk. There is sidewalk across the street to the north, but from my building going east on 7th Avenue, past the Drake to 81, currently has none. So I, I guess I would like to know, is the area where my building is located the only area that's going to get sidewalk for that short section in front of my building? Or is it going all the way to 81? Because my building is currently for sale.
Yeah, and thank you. What I'm going to do is normally what I would do, normally the process is I take all public testimony, write down the questions. But since this is a very specific question and you worded it in a way that I want to make sure that you're getting the answer that you want.
I appreciate that.
So I'm going to allow the question to go directly to Director Von I right now.
Absolutely. Thank you. Is your address the 401 7th Avenue?
It is.
Okay, perfect. So I've got that pulled up on the drawing here. And according to the plans from the engineering office, yes, that segment adjacent to that building will include sidewalk, but not through the driveway or that parking area. And that, that is the one prohibitive examples where we would not include sidewalk. Obviously, if we ran it through this perpendicular parking stall area, it would prohibit the use of all those parking stalls, so it would be discontinued here at this point.
Okay, so it's the area that's literally where, the, the front of my building?
Exactly. A portion of it, it looks like. This darker gray shaded area would be where the new sidewalk would go, which looks like about half the front edge of the building.
That doesn't seem like it ma- makes much sense.
So, and I will ask all questions to go through me because there's a chance it might not go directly to Director Von I, but I guess a little bit more explanation as to why that was designed the way it was?
Yeah, from what I can tell, it's hard to tell with this tree in the way, but there's a carriage sidewalk coming to the building from the curb.
Correct.
And then is there pavement past that?
There's pavement along, that's attached to my building. So there's a, there's a sidewalk from the street to the building and then there's a sidewalk along the building to the parking area on the east side of the building.
So I'm guessing this stretch is already in existence? Based on this drawing I've got in front of me, that's what it looks like. It could be the case.
I'm actually going to go to Councilman Shuddy, who I know drove the area just about an hour ago.
Thank you. I did drive the area. I have some things to bring up as well. However, I didn't take note on, on that portion, but you're saying there is a sidewalk there already where the tree is?
There's pavement.
Well, there, there's a sidewalk that's attached to my building that goes from my front step to the, the parking along the east side of my building. It isn't sidewalk. It is, but it's sidewalk that we've put in.
It goes from the street to the door, not from the curb to the curb.
Correct. There is, from the street to the door, there is.
Yep.
But it wouldn't, that's why I was a little confused. It's like the sidewalk stopped in the middle of the, the building.
So Ms. Benson, the floor is still yours. Do you have any more questions?
I'm really looking for clarification because to me that, in my mind, that doesn't make a lot of sense to have a sidewalk through half of a building and then a, an area where there isn't and then the parking lot for the Drake, which goes all the way to 81.
Yeah. And council, just so that you know, I mean, because I don't, normally I would force a certain different form of structure for this, but since we're talking the sidewalks and we're on your property, I'll stay, I'll say let's stay on this property for right now. Councilman Peters?
Yeah, question for Mr. Von I. Can you talk through maybe the exclusionary criteria? I know this is a small piece, but maybe talk a little bit about the criteria where, you know, use the example, it doesn't make sense. Well, what does a criteria have to meet for it to be removed from the plan? Am I making sense? You following me?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Councilman. So with this segment, here, I'll zoom in on it again. I'd, I'd refer to City Engineer Peterson, who could come up and speak to this in more detail than I could. Maybe this is just a segment that was omitted on this drawing, oversight by our drafter, I have no idea. But it would make sense to me that it would go as far east as wherever this pavement here ends or begins. So we maybe just have a small segment missing from this drawing. But as far as the criteria go, we look for instances such as what we've got to the east. So if you can imagine this sidewalk being continued through here.
That driveway is utilized on a very consistent basis between my building and the Drake.
Absolutely. So if we were to continue that sidewalk easterly, we would obstruct all these parking stalls and prohibit their use because by city ordinance, you can't block a sidewalk with your vehicle while you're parked in your driveway or in a parking stall such as these. So we didn't want to create hardship by eliminating all these parking stalls and including sidewalk there. That's one example of an exclusion on why that was not included in this project. Other areas near here that have come up would be the terrain or the grade of the lot, where if it's, if it's sloped down sharply towards the curb and in order to put a sidewalk in, it would be a cost prohibitive from a retaining wall standpoint or things of that nature. Because you can't cut into a side hill and just put sidewalk in without fixing that side hill. So a lot of times it would require expensive retaining wall type work. We didn't run into any of that on these stretches here. These are all fairly flat and accommodate sidewalk well. And, um, oh, the third criteria that's usually predominant one is the width of right-of-way. You know, how much space do we have for public right-of-way that has to include the road section plus the sidewalk and the boulevard space for snow storage? And in this area, we actually have an excessively wide right-of-way. I think it's, is it 80 feet, Justin? Yeah. So we've got plenty of space to include the sidewalks as far as a public right-of-way is concerned.
Any, Councilman Danforth?
I want to try to understand this. As I look at, oh, I did, anyway, let me get back on there. Trying to look at Google Earth here. So there's the, the lawn in front of the, to the south side of the building. And then, so that's grassy area now and where that tree is at is grass underneath it. And then it comes up against your driveway or back.
Where, where we park, yeah, where, where staff and customers and whatever park.
Right, along there. So, so we're, the plan right now is to take it just until it hits that carriage walk, correct? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's what this drawing shows. I'm not convinced that's accurate, though. This drawing could have an error in it and should be showing this little segment as well.
Okay. Engineer Peterson, can you provide any extra information on that? I saw him gesturing, so I know that he had been working intimately with it. Oh, no, there's two microphones. Don't worry about it, Lori.
The, the intent is for it to go to the, the driveway, the entrance there, so it would go through that tree, basically. It wouldn't, it wouldn't take out the tree, but it'd go through that area where, where the cursor is.
Okay. May I continue a little bit, Mayor? All right, so let's just say that I own the guest house and all of those parks.
Drake.
What is it?
The Drake.
Oh, that Drake. Yeah, that, Zoom Zoom Room. So I own that and all those spots are taken, right? I'm busy as heck. They're all taken and somebody wants to walk from the west to the east. Where do they walk? Where, I mean, where's that going to lead them if there's no defined sidewalk? Now there, if I recall, there's a few feet up against, between the, the wall and the front of the cars. But, so the, where are the people going to walk realistically?
And Director Von I or Engineer Peterson, it doesn't matter which one, if you want to take it. Or City Manager Mac?
Well, I think, I mean, that'd be clear speculation on my part, obviously. I would point out that, you know, foot traffic could be coming from and going to any combination of directions here. And so having this, you know, say somebody's parked over here and wants to walk to the west, having this connectivity. And so having this, you know, say somebody's parked over here and wants to walk to the west, having this connectivity would provide that ability. It wouldn't always be somebody coming from the west to the east, going over to Highway eighty-one. If that were the case and there was obstructions here, my guess is they would cross the street at the intersection, noting that there were obstructions ahead of them, and go across to the south side of the street in order to make that traverse to the east.
That's kind of where I'm going here. It's almost like a sidewalk to nowhere. If that building were occupied and if it was, people are going to come out. Well, first of all, if they're going to park over here, they're parking a private property in order to go to the west. It just seems like a sidewalk to nowhere, whether it's that as demonstrated or if it's the full sidewalk. The rest of it, I understand. I get it. That is an area that's much closer to commercial area, closer to the highways, different things that are down there. And you do see people in that area. This is one where, of this project, this is the one that I do question. Seems like if somebody's going to get there and if that's busy, if it ever gets sold and occupied, they're going to cross the street and walk on the sidewalk or go somewhere in some other direction anyway, in my opinion, in most cases, anyway. Just comments.
All right. Any further, Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. Would this, Heath, I'm going to direct this to you, Public Works Director Von I.
Thank you.
It's all right, man. Would this work for a waiver of right to protest? You know, we've done this several times in the past where, like Mike said, a sidewalk to nowhere. Would that be a potential way to handle this?
Yeah, I guess my response to that, Councilman Beeler, thanks for that question, would be that that's always an exercisable option, that we could issue a waiver of right to protest any future sidewalk installation here. As to the concern of whether it's a sidewalk to nowhere, again, I would have just emphasized that your pedestrian traffic can be generated from and going to any given direction. So somebody could be coming from the Drake and want to walk west, for example. And without this little segment, they're walking across this individual's lawn instead of on a sidewalk. Just keeping that in mind, that although in a snapshot, it may look like it's a sidewalk to nowhere, but you've got to think of the possibilities, the endless possibilities of your pedestrian traffic and where that could be generated, coming from and where they could be going to. It's always a myriad of examples that could come up in those, for that functionality.
Councilman Beeler's answer I've ever had.
You're welcome.
Thank you. But I, you know, we've used this in the past for, and just for Ms. Benson's, you know, for your information, I guess. Do you know what that means?
I sure do. I mean, I have been in that building since nineteen seventy-six.
Yeah.
And there is a full workable great sidewalk on the south side of the street. And the fact is, all along Salvation Army and all along the Drake, there will be no sidewalk, right? So it is seemingly to me a sidewalk to nowhere.
Actually, I'll let Director Von I answer that.
Yeah, the Salvation Army property is planned to be included in the sidewalk improvements.
Because there's people parking there twenty-four seven. So will they not have that parking available to them anymore?
Yeah. Mayor. Yeah, and go through me.
Okay.
Yeah, but thank you.
The, I'll pull up that site here. Their parking is set deeper into their lot, for the most part, with exception where this one van is. Generally speaking, it's set deeper into their lots. There's not an obstruction issue as there is with the Drake.
Mrs. Benson? Any further questions on just that property? Okay, thank you. You can stand by. There might be a question or two later. Public hearing is still open if there is someone else who would like to testify. Just ask that you identify yourself?
Beneath Aurora, six twenty-four Second Street Southeast. I received a letter about the street and sidewalks about two weeks ago. This is the first I heard about it. I am against putting sidewalk past my home for several reasons. There is very little foot traffic past my home. I won't be able to park one of my vehicles in front of my garage. If I park it tight against my garage, it will still be on the proposed sidewalk. So that will eliminate my, using my walkway to my backyard and garden. When we were going to build the garage, the guy from the City Hall okayed it and told us not to worry about sidewalks because one will never be put in because there is really nothing to the east. We worked hard putting our concrete driveway in by ourselves with shovels and wheelbarrow and slanting it to join with the four-foot apron. Now, I was told if the sidewalk goes in and the driveway don't meet the two percent slant, they will be putting a raise or bump in it. So in the winter, when it thaws, the water will stand behind this raise and freeze. So when I shovel my driveway, this will be ice, an accident waiting to happen. I'm the only residential home from Second Street and Seventh Avenue, southeast to Highway eighty-one. It's mostly all commercial business to the east. So the cost of the sidewalks won't affect them as it will me, who is struggling to make ends meet now. On the south side of the street, Seventh Avenue to Highway eighty-one, there is two places with sidewalks now. So maybe a sidewalk could be just on that side. Putting in sidewalk is not going to stop the flooding in this area when it rains heavy. Dan Schulte stopped by and I told him that there was no sidewalks put into the west of me last summer when they milled that street. One more thing. I thought I was bouncing back from the multiple major surgeries that I had in about the last one and a half years. Now with the stress of this sidewalk issue, it feels like I am going back downhill. Thank you for your time.
And Mrs. Rohr, could you spell your last name for me?
R U H R.
Thank you. Counsel, we're just, we'll go right on her property, which is six twelve Second Street Southeast. Are there any questions or comments on that, Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess sort of yes and no for me on this because there's a bigger picture. I don't want to get too far into this conversation without bringing up, I talked with the neighbor across the street. It's a backdoor window supply, they're directly to the south, right there. There, that's the portion where the street's going to be narrowed, giving them a little more boulevard. And talked with them here a little bit ago this afternoon, and they're out of town. But they said they never got notification. No, it could have been lost in the mail, so I'm not against anybody individually. So then they asked me, they go, what's our recourse? What do we do next? I explained to them the process tonight, showing up for the meeting, but they couldn't because they weren't, they had known, gotten word, maybe neighbors talking about it, but they didn't know if there's any sidewalk on their side. So the process is to get the public involved. That's why we mailed out letters, but they never, somehow it got lost in the process. And so, because their side is really getting affected with the road being narrowed and sidewalk getting put in. And I'm wondering, too, how big their driveway is right there between the garage door and the sidewalk, that big white roof you see kind of to the bottom right. Just for the sake of doing this correctly and having public involved, I guess, my question, I was looking to bring up, I got more questions about going to the west as well, but about deferring this. So I was wanting to make a motion, in fact, I'll make a motion right now to defer this on the grounds of the, getting the people that live in the neighborhood proper, you know, able to speak up on their opinion and be part of the process. Right now, they would be outside the process because of the mailing issue or whatever it was. So I'm making a motion to defer this.
Well, and thank you, Councilman. The, what I will do is when counsel actually has to take this up as an official action item before we, so we actually have to have an, a motion to have a counter motion or a substitute motion. So we're still on public hearing, so I can't take that up right now. But I will call upon you to make that motion at the given time. So public hearing, since we're just talking with Mrs. Rohr, or Ms. Rohr, sorry. Any other questions just on that property? Okay. Now I will accept a motion to approve the resolution. And just to explain to everyone, just because we make the motion does not mean that we personally agree with it. It's just that we have to take it up in order to discuss it. So can I get a motion to, thank you, Councilman Danforth, and seconded by Councilman Peters. Now we are up for questions and comments. Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, what I just said, I guess I would just, again, we can discuss, and there's good reasons why we do sidewalks. I'm actually for sidewalks for connectivity. I have some questions about the process of going north and not being, just being resurfaced, not reconstruct. But that said, as far as the neighbors to the south getting involved in this process and having their voice heard, they're going to miss out if we don't defer. So I just want to, that's, I'm making a motion that we defer.
And Councilman Shuddy, is your intent to defer to the next council meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Peters?
What's the, what's the notice? Does there a certain time period that you guys have to follow? Would we even make the next meeting is what I'm saying?
Yeah, we would follow state statute and resubmit a proper notice of a public hearing for the resolution of intent. And that requires a ten-day notice. So we can meet that because we have a five Monday month here. We can meet that before the May sixth meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Peters. So the motion would be a substitute motion to defer consideration until the first council meeting in May. I will open that up if there is a second. Now, it doesn't mean that that automatically means that we're going to, because we would have to vote upon that. Councilman Tupper? Okay. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Now, I will allow some leniency to talk about the project in general. But we are now in discussion upon the motion to defer, the substitute motion. So that is what we're doing. We have not voted upon that yet. So what we will do is we will discuss as normal with the overall project under discussion. But just know in your head that the motion that we are now considering is a substitute motion to defer action until the next council meeting. Now, once we're done having conversation, we will vote upon that motion to defer. If that fails, we go back to the original motion, which is to approve the resolution, just to explain that. So we are now on the substitute motion to defer. Councilman Jorance?
This is a question that I'd answer whether we defer or not, and that is, how many frontage foot? You know, she may not want to come back in two weeks, she may not have time. But the answer should still be the same. How much frontage foot does her property entail? And if I take that times thirty-two ninety, a frontage foot, I was just wondering what the cost was for her.
And who is her?
Ms. Rohr.
Ms. Rohr? Okay. Do we have the square feet?
We do. I would defer to City Engineer Peterson for that information for four oh one Seventh Avenue, southeast, Justin?
No, that's my address.
Yeah. This is six twelve. Six twelve? Six twenty-four? Oh, I'm sorry, I had it written down wrong. Okay.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were.
Thank you. I had it written down wrong. And I'm sorry, could you say your last name for me again?
Rohr.
Rohr, okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I was pronouncing it right.
Mayor, six twenty-four Second Street Southeast has one hundred and sixty-five linear feet. And the total assessment is five thousand four hundred and twenty-nine.
Councilman Jorance, the floor is still yours. Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question and I got a comment here, if I may. How are these notices sent out when we have something like this to, is it, say, certified mail? I don't know what the different options are. Just standard US mail? How do we, how does that get sent out?
City Engineer Peterson, do you know the answer to that? I'll let Justin speak to that, and I can chime in, too.
These were sent out regular mail.
Councilman Danforth?
Shouldn't, procedurally, when it's going to cost somebody money, it seems like, it seems more appropriate that we send it out in some manner that we get a receipt of their receipt of a letter. Just comment on that. And if I may, Mayor, I just got a, I struggle with this because I know everybody on this council, I know we as a staff, Mayor, I know you, we've all had umpteen discussions over the years. We had committees on affordable housing. How do we get to affordable housing? It's hard to get to affordable housing when we keep adding requirements onto these individuals. Now, I understand new development, I get it. But I look at this and I go, I don't know how old this home is. It's seventy, eighty years old. I struggle with the fact that we put these requirements on individuals and then turn right around in our next breath and talk about how do we get to affordable housing? That's my struggle. If I could just have a wand and we paid for it or it was just there, I'd say, yep, they're a great thing. And I'm all in favor of sidewalks. My biggest struggle is the financial burden or demand that we're putting on individuals this far down the game. And again, that's, we're not talking about new development. We're talking about older areas that have never had sidewalks. That's my struggle. And it just seems hypocritical. I'm not faulting staff in any way, shape or form because they're doing their job and they do a good job at it. And Mr. Von I, you actually changed my opinion on the sidewalk to nowhere, so thank you for that, by the way. I do struggle for this. I just do. And I'd love to say, yep, I agree with it. But by the same token, I have a hard time putting that kind of a financial burden on individuals. I'll just end it right there.
Councilman Tupper?
Maybe touch base a little bit on what Councilman Danforth said, and I don't disagree with him. But then I got to put on my mayor's committee with people with disabilities hat. I mean, I, we also limit certain amount of individuals within our community to be able to access certain neighborhoods. And I've seen it happen time and time again. If you do a lot of, if you do any research on communities that are, say, pedestrian friendly, they wouldn't even give this a second thought. I mean, it would be basically automatic. And I think we've got to keep those people in mind, too. They have just as much right to the access to our whole community as anybody. So although I do somewhat agree with Mr. Danforth, but when I put my other hat on, I got to somewhat disagree with Mr. Danforth that we need to make sure that these neighborhoods that our forefathers years ago made that mistake, that we're not making that same mistake. So I guess that's all I got.
Would anyone like to speak before Councilman Shuddy speaks a second time? Councilman Shuddy?
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with both councilmen that just spoke their opinions on this, their thoughts. Actually, with Councilman Tupper, I agree with the, I said earlier, I'm for sidewalks for the reason of ADA and having neighborhoods. Let's get these up to par. The challenge may be more internally, how we go about doing this in the future. If you were to go move your slide on the computer to the broader view of the neighborhood, if you could, please? One more, when it shows all the way, six more blocks to the west. There you go. Okay, so there's about six blocks, I believe, to the west to the river, about a half a mile. That was just resurfaced last fall, just redone. So it's got all new asphalt and they just, now these last three blocks are being reconstructed, I believe it's called. The ones that were resurfaced here for that half mile was not a reconstruct, so there was no sidewalks put in. It was just a resurface. So those just got done with no sidewalks. And I've got a feeling we got decades before those were going to get looked at again. And because it just got redone. So here we got a portion that didn't get sidewalks because it was deemed resurfacing or whatever the term is. But because this is a reconstruct, now they're sidewalks. And I don't know if we can make it to where, when it's a resurfacing, we still can put sidewalks in, maybe? So that way we can get this connectivity going. But just on this one here, too, with the six blocks, half mile, just got done last fall. That won't get revisited for decades.
six blocks, half mile, just got done last fall. That won't get revisited for decades. And we didn't put sidewalks in there because it wasn't a reconstruct where this one is. So I guess that's, that's more of a maybe behind the scenes rethink how we go about doing this. So we don't, we're always going to, we'd rather not reconstruct. You know, we're putting new sewer, working on re-updating our sewage sewer pipes, things like that in ways where we don't have to tear streets apart. We just, you know, we've got that going on. Well, if we do more of that, we won't have to do as much reconstruct, which means we're only going to have portions of reconstruct, which is a lot cheaper. That's great. But we're only going to have three blocks here, a couple blocks here getting sidewalks, and the other five, six, eight, 10 blocks we do without reconstruct, well, we're not putting sidewalks in. So there's still something just amiss, I think, on how we are going about this. But again, I'm also, I'm bringing this up so I can get educated on this a little bit better as well, not to be any kind of, you know, my point is valid, and I want to be heard. It's more, I want to find out how we can do this better than we are doing it. Maybe that discussion can be had in the next couple of weeks if we were to approve deferring this, because there is just one resident on this. I understand the sidewalks. If we would have done the other six blocks, maybe it would have been four of this, but we didn't. So anyway, just my thoughts to get us to think through this process tonight.
Director Von I, if you, that wasn't necessarily a question, but I think that Councilman Shuddy raised some interesting points with the, so it was a, it wasn't a reconstruction, but it was a resurfacing of that road extending to the northwest. Just want to ask if you have insight upon that?
Yes, absolutely, Mayor, Councilman. I would liken this to the project to the northeast Seventh Avenue, northeast, actually, same, same street designation. Seventh Avenue Northeast and this segment of several blocks to the west of this location here on Seventh Avenue Southeast were all done last construction season, both of which sidewalk was not included due to budgetary constraints. And I believe, and City Engineer Peterson could speak more depth to this, that the intent is to go back and to install those sidewalks on both of those stretches. A matter of when it's programmed and budgeted for, I can't speak to right now, but that was the intent for both those locations, Seventh Avenue Northeast and this location where this mill and overlay occurred last year.
Engineer Peterson, you don't have to add information, but I guess it would be curious if that has been planned?
The, yeah, both, as, as he, Director Von I said, we, both those stretches are being looked at as far as programming, when those would be, the sidewalks would be put in. The, the plan for both of them was to come back and do the sidewalk at a later time.
Okay, thank you, Engineer Peterson, or City Engineer Peterson, sorry. Question for City Manager Mack or Director Von I, or whoever wants to take it. Let's just say if the council did vote to defer for another, until the next council meeting, does that have an impact on timing at all? Is there any, is there any, is there any ancillary impact that we are not aware of if we just pushed back action?
Justin, what's the status of this work contractually?
I was just going through that in my head. It's out to bid. May 6 is the date we were planning on bringing it, the bid award, so they would coincide at the same time.
So in that regard, Mayor, I would say that it wouldn't be adversely impactful to that process. We could still bring a bid award on May 6, and, and depending any discussion or outcomes on the resolution necessity on May 6, we could then award the bid with any exclusions that we may want to. If, if, that way it's clear in the contract, right when it's awarded, we don't have to change order or something out later. That's always an option, too. We could change order this workout a later date.
So Director Von I, just so that I and everyone else is clear on this, what would happen is, let's say if we defer this to the, is it the May 6 council meeting, so we would essentially be getting the bids back that afternoon, having a council meeting that night to potentially approve this. But that really wouldn't impact the cost on the bid because the city is still on the hook to do the ramps on every corner, correct?
Yes, there are components that we would keep in the contract regardless of what's decided with the sidewalk.
So it does not affect the city's price point on this project?
It does from respect to the sidewalk, because we pay for that upfront as part of that contract with the bidding contract. And then that cost gets assessed back later.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Jurens?
I would agree with Councilman Shuddy's motion to push this off a couple of weeks. I also want to let him know that he should, we thank him for going out there and knocking on a couple of doors and making a couple of phone calls, because a lot of times from the chairs, this can be impersonal. A lot of times from City Hall or any other business place when we're making decisions that are personal. But I go back to the calculator that Engineer Peterson used, 5,000, my screen just died, $5,428.50. And then I go and I, I know who's got to clean that sidewalk off, and it's her, the person who took the time to come in here and give her opinion and not just shake her hand and her fist at us and her finger, but to give her story. And in two weeks, I will take that into consideration. That's all I have.
Any further comments, council? Councilman Shuddy, did you want to say something?
Thank you for that. I know I spoke twice, but one follow, I was unaware of the fact we're considering, if I heard correctly, putting sidewalks in on the, those six blocks to the west of this proposed project, correct? I mean, that, I mean, just right now, it's kind of a maybe. We'll see. We're thinking about it, which is where it starts. We think about this. That's a bigger discussion that will affect, could potentially affect this vote even, but without knowing that for sure, you know, that's, that's, that's an interesting point that will, could make a difference. That's why maybe deferring this to kind of work through and talk about that more could be advantageous.
Any further conversation upon Councilman Shuddy's motion to defer? Councilman Buehler?
Thanks, Mayor. This has nothing to do with deferring this, but I do have a question. I think I know the answer, but I'll ask Public Works Director Von I. Could we bid this in the regular timeframe if we just did a bid alternate for the sidewalks? Or is that going to have too much of an effect on the rest of the project to bid?
Yeah, great question. Thinking on the fly here, I think it'd probably be best just to continue to, as it's advertised right now with everything all-inclusive, and based on the, any action from May 6, we could either exclude a line item from that bid or change order out that sidewalk amount after the bid is awarded. Either one of those scenarios can be effective.
Mayor? Director?
If I could add some context as to the letters that were sent. So I just, and I want to point this out because any assessments follow a strict South Dakota State statute spelled out process. And in that process, we are given the option to mail the individual property owner letters by first class or by certified mail. And the city typically has opted to go first class. That was a decision made a handful of years ago, not only in the engineering division, but also community development. There are certain, certain actions that require certified mailing, but the ones that give the option, we typically err on the first-class mail, along with the public notification that's posted in the, in the newspaper of record for the community. So I just wanted to make sure it was noted that we did follow the statutory requirements for that process.
Thank you. Councilman Tupper, and I just want to say, I'm sure that no one on the council thinks that, that it was not mailed out, or that, but it's, the world has changed so much. There is a newspaper of record, but whether or not anyone reads it is another question. And then also, mail is also something that people don't run to the mailbox for and open the day of anymore. So it's just, the world has changed, and I know that there's governments all over America that are trying to figure out, how do you get out this information to the public when they are affected? And we, nobody has found a perfect way of doing that yet. Councilman Tupper, did you have something?
The only question I got, it seems like we, every time we do a road construction project anymore, we run against this when it's total reconstruction and we got sidewalks involved. Would we be better off to look at all other projects, in all fairness to the contractors that are bidding them, because now if I'm the contractor bidding this, and I think I want to get the whole package, that may influence the amount of my total bid. I think we should start looking at them as being an alternate when we send it out to bid. It just seems like we're, here, I want to see them in every neighborhood. We do a total reconstruction. I mean, that's, that's just my point with, with people with disabilities, that we have to make the city more accessible. But it seems like we're up against this struggle all the time, every time we do one of these projects. My question is, is sidewalk just put into a bid as an alternate to begin with, so?
More of a comment, Councilman, or did you want to, you want?
If somebody would want to answer it, if not, that's fine, too, so.
City Manager Mack?
I don't know if it's so much an answer, it's more just thinking out loud about the process. You know, if, if it's an alternate, do we still then go through the assessment notices upfront? Or do you bid it as an alternate, and then depending on what the council wants to do, do you go through the assessment process? I mean, it would just change how we proceed with these things. And someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but part of why we automatically include sidewalks in reconstructions is related to the federal ADA law, correct? That we have to redo the sidewalk ramps or make them compliant when any sort of reconstruction is happening. Is that right? Versus the, the mill and overlay?
Yeah, the sidewalk ramps are triggered for this magnitude of street work, correct?
Mayor, may I?
Councilman Tupper?
Yeah, and I totally agree. I mean, we're going to be putting in a lot of ADA ramps to no place. It seems like we've been doing a lot of that lately, and I know that's a federal law. But I don't know if that we would leave it out of a, or an assessment role. I think we still need to add it into that assessment, however you want to say, not assessment role. But I think it'd be upfront. That way we see where the neighborhood is before we just decide to add, you know, here, anytime we, I heard it, heard it last week during the bid opening, that, you know, if we don't get it done now, we'll never get it done. So, and that's kind of the case here. If we don't put the sidewalk in now, it's, it's probably never going to get done, so.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions upon the substitute motion to defer action? The motion is to defer action upon this item until the first meeting in May. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Director, Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper?
If you want to defer, you say yes, or aye.
Aye. Yes, aye.
Okay. Buehler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We'll see this again in a couple of weeks. If you are, if you are able to come on back, you are sure welcome. But otherwise, I know that the entire council will remember your comments at the next time we take this hearing. So, all right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item 12A, an adoption of the Parks Master Plan. City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. I will give a little bit of background. We do have our Park and Rec Director with us this evening, who can provide more detailed information. You may recall that back in, it was spring or early summer of 2022, we engaged with Stockwell Engineers to create a master park plan for our community. Shortly after that, our Park and Rec Director at the time departed, and Dusty came on board with us in November of 2022. So we sort of parked that. We signed a contract with Stockwell, but hadn't started on any of the work. Dusty came on board in November of 22, took a look at the work that they were planning to do for us. And if you recall, it was late, late 2022 or early 2023, we did a work session with the council and asked to expand the scope of that contract to include some things that were not part of it, that we felt would give better clarity and provide more usable information into the plan. So we entered into an agreement. Well, we amended that agreement in February of 2023, and it was presented to all of you as well as the Park and Rec Board last Monday. So key components of the plan include an inventory and analysis of all existing resources, a community needs assessment, a statistically valid community survey, facility assessments and future recommendations. The, throughout this entire process, the staff, park board, community stakeholders input was sought to create the plan initiatives, and it will serve as the guiding document for decision-making, strategic planning, and efficient resource management. It does help the department set long-term goals and serves as a roadmap for providing the community sustainable outdoor spaces that enhance quality of life in Watertown. And one of the key reasons for a plan like this is to help with the budget. So when we know what the priorities are, we can better budget for those. With that, I will stand by for any questions. I do believe there are some, and I am here to answer them, as well as Director Radek.
Director, would you like to say anything before we open it up for council?
If you have any questions, we can have.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the plan. Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Buehler. Let's open it up for questions and comments.
Nobody else, I'll do it.
Councilman Danforth?
There's a whole list.
Surprise, surprise. First, my question is this, is when we say that we are adopting that, what does that mean? What does that mean to the council? What does that mean to future councils? How is this document going to be used? So some money, I'm going to, Ms. Mack, I'll give that to you, as to what does that mean when we are saying we are adopting it or accepting it?
So from my perspective, you're treating it just like you're treating the comprehensive use plan, the master transportation plan, any of these other, you know, strategic plans, they're a roadmap. They're a guide for staff and the community. It doesn't mean that you have to follow it line by line, but when we propose a budget that contains elements within it, you can decide if you like that or you don't. So it's, it's really no different than the other plans and studies that the council has adopted throughout the years.
May I continue, Mayor?
Yes, I will.
What if we don't adopt it?
That is certainly your choice. Then we, as staff, don't really have a clear roadmap of what the community and needs, wants, desires. And I mean, we can, we can guess. But I would say, you know, a lot of time, over a year's worth of work has gone into this, significant time spent by the Park and Rec Board. And we spent a little over $91,000 on, on this process. A good chunk of that was on the statistically valid survey that was done.
Continue? Is there anybody else that has a question or whatever before I, okay. So keep rolling here. That's what I'm going to do. If I got it, you're going to have to pry it out of my hand. So, and the reason why I say this is I have, we were given a good 30,000-foot executive summary overview of it at our work session. There were a lot of questions in that, at that, from all of us, good and bad. How many pages is this? Like 270 or something?
300.
How much? 250?
Yes, that does include the entire survey, though, and all of the responses, so.
Well, I'll just say I haven't went through 250 pages. I've, I've kind of went through it. And there's a lot of things in there that, okay, I get it. There's a lot of things in there I don't agree with, to be honest with you. Either don't understand, or don't agree, or have questions on. And so for me to say, yep, let's adopt it without truly understanding to what extent we're adopting this and what that means to us, that's concerning to me. But I, you know, I do get it. If it is a tool versus the tool... If it is a tool versus the tool, that's a whole different approach for me mentally. Because I will tell you that we have had items in the past that the council has agreed to, to fund for studies and such, that ultimately end up coming back, get approved, then later down the road, we get things that are, are maybe not, weren't understood, not agreed to, and the comment awful time is, well, the council approved it. And while that might be true, the fact is, is you got 250 pages here, that unless I agree with the whole thing, if I don't agree with it, then I should be denying it. I should say, no, I don't agree with it. But if it's a tool, then I'm fine. If it's the tool, then I can't agree to adopt it. So, can I, and if I may, Mayor, I got one, at least for now, one last question. Two questions.
You won't, you said one?
One is, my understanding is, is that there's at least some rumblings that there could be a new visioning process that would be coming within the community, community-led visioning process. We always know that there's going to be a lot of quality of life issues that come out of that. A lot of those quality of life issues are related to recreational-type things. How do these two work together? How does that end product of what I would presume will be great process, a visioning process compared back to this? That's the first question. Second one is, and this is to whomever, is what are the, is there, give me the top three, four, five items that came out of that report that we didn't already know or understand that we, that justified ultimately this, this end product?
Mayor?
City Manager?
All right, I will attempt to answer the, the first question, related to the visioning. I would hope that whatever process that community group decides to use, they would use this as a resource to help inform their, their desires. I, too, have heard, well, I haven't heard, I've been told by members of that group that they're moving forward with that, with that planning process. I'm uncertain of the role that the city will be playing in that, if any. But we also, from a, a long-term capital planning process, can't wait for a community group to go through a year's worth of visioning, especially if it does not include a role for the city to play in it, before we put any long-term plans into place for our park system. Now, to your, your last question, sure, there are probably things out of it that we could all safely assume, right? We got to do something with the auditorium, we got to do something with the mace. A couple of really valuable things that, that came out of it were some structural analysis, some high-level budgetary numbers, you know, if you're gonna bring, bring the auditorium back, you know, if you're gonna reset its shelf life, you're looking at, you know, an exorbitant amount of money. I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but I, when I heard it, I was like, wow, that is a lot of money. The mace, you know, we, we have a lot of options available to us for repurposing that. The thing that keeps being said, at least I'll just speak for myself, that people who contact me, and I think the same people who contact Dusty, talk about flat floor space, fieldhouse space. Okay, well, we know through this assessment, the bones are relatively good, there are certain things that would have to be retrofitted or redone in order to utilize that, and so they gave us a cost per square foot analysis. Some other things, we now have a complete inventory of all of our public park areas and amenities, and they all have been put on a, gosh, what is the right terminology? Say that again?
Matrix.
Matrix. So, we know when they should be replaced, if they already should have been replaced, repairs that are needed, you know, things like that. We also have the way that people want to use their parks. I mean, that, that survey, and in addition to the survey, all of the public meetings that were done, we now, we now have a clearer picture of what those spaces should and could look like for the community to continue to use them and to use them at a higher, higher capacity. You know, we, the, the community survey piece is really important in the work that not only we try to do with our park system, but how we program our system as well. And even though this particular study is not related to the recreation side directly, in terms of what programs we offer, and how often we offer them, or whatnot, it does help inform how we program our spaces, whether it's the auditorium, or, you know, ball fields, or what have you. So, those are some, some things that I take away from it. I know from a planning and staff perspective, it certainly helps us when we're trying to prepare budgets, rather than just throwing darts at a wall, or spaghetti at a wall. We at least have a roadmap. It is yours, I thought, I thought you'd appreciate that. You know, we at least have a roadmap to be bringing something forward that a statistically valid portion of our community said, here's where our, our priorities and our desires
Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. As a, I've been the liaison to the Park and Rec Board for quite some time, and I actually was probably one of the instigators for this study. I think it's a good tool, I think it's a great resource for us to draw on. I know back, when I looked at this to begin with, I didn't feel like the spirit and the intent with it, of this study was for them to just say, here's what you need to do, and we just adopt it. To me, it was recommendations. And to Councilman Danforth's point, I think this is something that we do need to mull over. I think there's certain aspects to this whole plan, that there are certain user groups that should be a part of the decision-making on what we do with those. So, to me, you know, from the onset, that was not my understanding, that this was going to be a plan, boom, here it is, adopt it, go with it. I think this does need a little dissection before we just go ahead and put these things into place. But I do think it's a great tool. I think Stockwell, they've got a great deal of experience, I think they've given us some good information, but I do think it behooves us to look at this in a little more detail and make a decision as a council, what direction, and the Park and Rec Board as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman? Sure, City Manager?
Okay. The term adoption is simply that, you're recognizing that the work is completed. So, Stockwell has completed their obligation to prepare a Park and Rec Master Plan for the city of Watertown. That is, that is all this action is. When we budget, that's when we have the discussion, if the, what we put in the long-term plan meets what you all have a vision for, for Park and Rec in the long-term plan. If we're gonna turn the mace into pickleball courts, clearly, there will be some public input on, on that, as it will happen in a public meeting. I don't think there's any plan, at least in my time here, my computer's about to die, I'm very sorry, where we, that we have adopted, that staff then just goes and does, and there's no input from the council. We have to bring things to you for consideration and discussion all the time.
Councilman Bueller? Councilman Shetty?
All right, actually, and thank you, Ms. Mack, that helps me with, that was my question before the meeting, too, was this adoption, what that really meant, so I appreciate Councilman Danforth's questions on that, and the explanation does help. We're not going to delve into this as a council and break it apart, I think that's just a resource for how to move forward, potentially. So, my second, so my question really, then, I guess, is, when we vote on this, is it going to be a vote or the vote? Just curious.
We need snacks.
Any further council comments or questions? Councilman Jurens?
So, we can have our different, differing opinions on the philosophical reasons of studies like this, and the reason for spending that much money. I know Bueller was, Councilman Bueller, sorry, was a part of, you know, a Park and Rec Board that said, we need some insight. Speaking of the Park and Rec Board, would this be a good place to get them involved, to, you know, hear more? I know they were in our meeting with us, but, I mean, we haven't had a chance to chat with them. Will they be involved? Are they involved? What is their role in, in, you know, they're, they're in that day-to-day a lot more than we are. So, you know, do they agree with the council's priorities? And as a councilperson, I don't want to be at the Park and Rec Board meeting every other week. That's a big job. That's, that's, that gets interesting there. I've heard of some of those discussions. So, that was, that was one, one thing, and Councilman Bueller did, you know, refer to, you know, this, the other interests. And one, if you haven't figured this out by now, I'm kind of into outdoor activities, shooting sports. You know, implementing their needs in this, and they may or may not have a need, and that may be county-related, I think there's a lot of ins and outs there, so thank you, City Manager Mack, for giving us a little insight on what this means that we're voting on tonight.
City Manager?
I'm trying to remember my, oh, the Park Board.
Park and Rec.
Yes. So, the, the Park Board actually served as what you would call the steering committee for creating this plan. So, they worked pretty intimately with Stockwell over the last, what, 15 months in developing this, so their, their fingerprints are all over this plan. They also helped facilitate some of the public meetings that were held, there were Park Board members at, at all of those. And like with anything related to Park and Rec, when it comes to, you know, visioning and, and how to utilize parks, it starts at the Park and Rec Board and eventually makes its way up to the council.
Councilman Jurens, the floor is still yours.
Quick follow-up on the philosophical side of this. Four or five years ago, a study like this was done on Lake Compeska and produced the Compeska Master Plan, and there's a lot of that, that I've read through, that wasn't really followed when things were, were done. And so, yeah, it just kind of, just kind of, I have questions, being new to this, this operation. I have questions on where those priorities are going to be, the ones that are under the budget level are the ones that we don't approve. And just wondering, you know, those people that are involved, where, where are those priorities coming from? So, thank you.
Councilman Peters?
Yeah, just a couple of thoughts. So, what I'm hearing is, and City Manager, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is just an adoption saying the, the study is done, anything in this study would come back to council approval in terms of upgrades, expenditures, through the budgeting process, nothing would be back-dooring us, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, I agree with Councilman Jurens in the, in the idea of the reports, this is nice, and I'm skimming through 250 pages right now, so I haven't read this whole thing, and I missed the, the work session, but this plan isn't suggesting that anything be done. It's more of a report of, are we satisfied with what we have? Can we improve in some things? Nothing is suggesting that we need a, you know, a shooting arena, or anything like that.
Right, that, that's correct. One tangible area, I mean, if we're, if we put aside, you know, what can this space be used for? The, the matrix that's been created with all of the equipment, right? When we look at cycling out playground equipment, or repurposing spaces, that helps us prioritize based on whatever grade level it's been given. If we've got equipment that is dangerous, right, like, that's what we're going to replace first. That's what we're going to present in a budget, and we can say, hey, based off the scoring that was done, here's why, here's why we're, why we're bringing to you, we want to replace equipment at da-da-da-da park this year, and then we're budgeting X amount of dollars for it. It also helps you all, when you get questions from the community, well, why'd you put new equipment there, but not over here? It's a little bit like the pavement management program. It, it gives everything a grade. And when we have things graded, granted, stuff pops up that you got to deal with, it helps us be more systematic in our cycling of equipment, vehicles, you know, things like that. It helps provide a level of stability, that's what we're working from.
Mayor, so I appreciate that response, because I look at this as a, it's a study, it's not a plan. So, I think that plan is deceiving, where we're looking at this as, this is the roadmap, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to fix, it's just, it's an assessment. I just wanted to clarify that, that's how I'm looking at this.
Councilman Tupper?
Easy way to put it, it's just like a, in old-style SWOT analysis, here's our strengths, our weaknesses, where do we need to work on first, and it's an inventory of all of our parks. I mean, I think each of us could drive around, look at a park, and find something that we feel that should be replaced, but the people that are experts are the ones that figure out the longevity of these pieces of equipment, and, and kind of give us that, that guideline of what, here. Who, who decided what got replaced in the past? Just somebody that decided that, God, I kind of like this park, but I think I'm going to replace something here. Now, it's, it's kind of a, that, that inventory of, of special, but maybe some special needs or special assessment of some of that property that just kind of scores it, it gives us that scorecard of what's, you know, what's, for a score to zero to 10, and 10 being the worst, of course, we're going to start at the 10 and work our way down, so I think it's pretty simple, so.
Thank you. And I'll just say something, and, but it's not closing the debate or anything like that. I agree with, I think, everything that I've heard on the council tonight. I do get skeptical whenever we hire outsiders from not inside Watertown to tell us about our town. I don't, I think largely that is not money that I like to spend. With that said, I was convinced to go forward with this plan, and I actually was quite pleased with it. I have read the 250 pages, and I do say that there's a lot of really good stuff in there that I do like, that provides us more information. I will reside on, I will rely upon two legislative axioms. Number one, you cannot bind a future council. So, this is, but you can be, you do reserve the right to be smarter tomorrow than what you are today. So, I consider this as factoring into both of them, because this is not the plan, we are not binding next year's council, two years from now, five years from now, six years from now, to, that this has to be the plan, because things change. I remember about four years ago, I probably am not sure, I've heard, I had heard of pickleball four years ago, but it definitely was nowhere near the level of popularity that it is now, and even three years ago, after I became mayor, there was no plan to do an outside court, and then that got done super fast, and I know that that was not on any plan, but we found a way to make it happen, because it was viewed as a priority that came up in the community. So, I think that's an example of, this is a way to be smarter tomorrow than what we are today, and this is a gift that we can give to the future of Watertown, to have the information that we did glean from this expert report. And I do got to say, I, I reserve the right to be skeptical of all future studies where we hire outside experts, but this one, I have to say, they did a pretty good job.
Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I did have some communication with a couple of individuals regarding, that's the, to respond to my questions, and I sent a number of questions to City Manager Mack today, so I didn't want to blindside her on this, but I want to, I think some of the individuals that, that, where their level of interest is, is these individuals are certainly in the Park and Rec, you know, when they read the background information, I think the part that concerned them was this statement, it says, this plan will serve as the guiding document. I think use of the word "the" is what created concern. It's a document used in a process, and I think that's really important for all of us to understand. It's not a, it can be a play with words, but "the" is pretty definitive, it's, it's, that's it. So, as long as, and Councilman Peter said, we're recognizing completion, I get it, I was kind of hoping if we denied it, we wouldn't have to pay the bill, but.
I'm sorry, thank you.
It has? All right. So, we're recognizing that, and as long as we understand it's a tool, it's a resource, and not the tool, and the map, I'm good with it. I do have a question, but, and again, I apologize. I do have a question, but, and again, I apologize if I, if I'm missing it in the report right now, but one of the things that we talked about way back, and certainly coming into the approval of this, for this study, was the use of, is our concept, our, our planning methodology to have all these little individual neighborhood parks, is that still relevant today? I know there's some discussion in here about, okay, this park or these, the parks we have. But what about concept-wise going forward? As we grow, as we have new developments come in, and do we continue down the path? Is that the right way to go with neighborhood parks? Is that addressed to any extent in here? Does anybody know?
I will ask Director Rodick to, Rodick, God dang, it's a long day. Sorry. I said his name wrong. Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm terrible. Can you provide some clarity on that, please?
Yes, if, can you hear, okay. There we go. I got to get a little closer to the mic. There is, part of the, the study talks about levels of service. And there's national standards that have been established for levels of service in communities. Excuse me. The essentially, you know, one of the recommendations, and, and again, you know, good discussion. This is a fluid document. You know, those are recommendations from these consultants. But, you know, we have a neighborhood, residential neighborhood, you know, River Ridge area. Again, lots of, lots of residents up in that area. That is one area that, within this study, that, you know, was identified as a need for a park area, just based on the national standards. You know, if you look in that study, there's like little radiuses around each park to cover, you know, your, your neighborhood areas. Some, some sites cover a larger radius, based on the type of park they are, whether they're a community park, a neighborhood park, a small, you know, pocket, pocket-type park. But that is, you know, part of how they come up with those levels of service.
So, the path that we have used in the path, Bill, for the most part, the concept and the path that we'll use in regards to future developments and the creation of neighborhood parks without defining exactly what those parks are, is that correct? We'll continue down that path?
Well, I was going to say, based on the, the national standards, we look at areas within our community that aren't being served by a park at whatever level, you know? And again, it depends on the size of the park and, you know, the amenities and things like that. So, I'm not sure that answered your question, or maybe I didn't understand it.
Are you asking, are we going to keep building small neighborhood parks?
Basically.
They did look at our, the language for cash-in lieu.
Park dedication.
The park dedication language, and they found it to be on par with, with others. What, what I would envision is, all right, we have a new development, and there's some land that's been dedicated. I think we then look at this as the guide for what kind of park space would go there. It wouldn't necessarily be your small neighborhood park with some swings and a slide, which is what we've traditionally done. The plan calls for a lot of, you know, just green space. So, pollinator gardens, some pathways through there, you know, some different mixed-use type space that don't require a lot of maintenance and upkeep. And so, based on where we're at nationally, right, with some of those metrics, it can help guide what type of park would go into new developments.
The other part of that is if there was, you know, let's say, two developments, you know, in, let's say, semi-close proximity, and one has a developed park or, you know, plans for a developed park, and the other, if that falls within that service area, well, then in that case, we say, okay, we're not going to build a park in that second development. We will take the cash-in lieu in that instance.
Councilman Tupper?
If you remember, right during our work session last week, I did, refresh my memory, what was the gentleman's name that was there from?
David.
David from Stockwell. I did ask him at that point, or at one point, that if he felt our policy for, for dedication of parkland or cash-in lieu was, you know, in proper perspective, because I know it's been brought up at the Plan Commission in Board of Adjustment Meeting, and he felt that it was adequate, what we, what we're doing today.
Any further conversation, council? Just want to say thank you on behalf of everyone, and thank you, Stockwell. Thank you, Park and Rec Board, Director Rodick. And with not hearing any further comments, the motion is to adopt the Parks Master Plan. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzien, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper?
Aye.
Bueller? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerns?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to item 12B, a council approval of a building permit extension for the Stony Point condos located at 724 Stony Point Trail, and Stony Point Trail infrastructure improvements associated with the building permit. City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you is an extension for the Stony Point condo building permit. Their permit expired on January 14th, 2024, with some items that have not yet been completed. Extensions and the proposed schedule of any, of this permit, excuse me, require approval by the council. The outstanding items include installing of the curb and gutter sections along Stony Point Trail Northwest, installation of sidewalk and other public improvements, paving of the second lift of asphalt, and adjustment of any utility items along Stony Point Trail. And then a private street public access easement or public right-of-way shall be platted for Stony Point Trail Northwest to memorialize access to the condos. It is city policy that an extension of the permit would require half of the permit fee to be paid as well. The applicant is asking for the fee to be waived as, as part of their request to extend the permit. I will stand by for any questions, but since, excuse me, Assistant City Manager Vonai and Community Development Manager Hanton are probably best suited to answer your specific questions.
And do we want to hear from either of those right now? I don't need to open up a public hearing, and you definitely don't need to say anything to precede the comments. I know that you're here, Mr. Drake, to answer some questions if the council has some, but I would welcome you to the microphone if you wanted to.
I mean, I wrote pretty much everything in the letters, so.
Okay. Then what he said from the background is he wrote pretty much everything that he did in the letter, or is what he would say. So, with that, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the extension. And, let's see, council, yep. That's all that the motion?
We want to take separate action on.
Okay, but that was not listed here.
Yeah, that's okay. You can make your own motion.
Okay. Chair will, I will take under two separate motions, but we will discuss it all as one. So, we will do council approval for the building permit extension, and I will ask for a second motion, if, unless anyone on council disagrees. A second motion to waive the, what was the, how would you exactly state that, City Manager?
The suggested motion in the packet is approve the building permit extension for the Stony Point condos located, and Stony Point Trail infrastructure improvements associated with the building permit with or without charging half of the original permit fee. I'm not sure why that didn't get translated onto the printed copy. That is the motion that's on your agenda item online. You can take them separately if you like. Sure.
Mayor, if I may. Okay. I would just say, the suggested motion has "with," "without." That is not a motion. That is, we can determine, so I can't take that. So, what I will do is we'll just say, it is one topic of conversation, but I will work on, I will make a motion, I will, when it comes time to the official motion, I will say, "Without charging half the original permit fee." That will be how I will propose the motion be considered. And then if we want to not, if we, if we do want to charge the full fee and not half of it, then that would be a substitute motion. Okay? So, that's how I'm going to view it.
My motion is to approve as written.
The entire motion?
Correct.
We can do that. Point of clarification?
Right now, from the fee, fee staff points, either all or nothing. Correct?
City Manager Mack?
Yeah, so the policy is that the, the fee is half of the original building permit fee. So, you're deciding, yes, you want to charge that, or no, you do not.
And there's no in-between?
That's entirely up to you all, if you want to come up with a different amount.
When would that occur in this process?
If you were going to make a separate motion to charge a fee for X amount.
I'm. Yeah, okay. I'll tell you what, we are going to move on to item C right now. I apologize, Mr. Drake, but I need to make sure what this wording is, and this is not clear right now. I don't think it's, I will just say, for me, it's not clear. I am not comfortable going forward with the language that is currently in front of us. We can get it hammered out yet tonight, but I need at least a moment to, to deal with this. Director Vonai?
I apologize greatly for the confusion here on the document in the packet, but generally speaking, I think I could paraphrase the two action items that the applicant is seeking. One is for the building permit extension, which is pretty straightforward, and, and could be found in the original title of the agenda item. And then the second one is to waive half the permit fee that it would cost to renew his building permit. By ordinance, city staff cannot renew a permit after three years. It has to go to the councils. That's why the building permit renewal is before you. And also by ordinance, whenever we renew or extend a building permit, ordinance requires us to charge half of the original building permit fee. And the applicant is seeking to waive that half building permit fee in order to renew. That permit fee and its half value would be, it was just north of $14,000. It's a pretty substantial building permit fee based on the $11.6 million project valuation that the original permit fee was set up on.
Okay. Council, unless there is direct opposition to the Chair, what I'm going to do is, I know that there's at least one person who has been waiting here to testify on item 12C. On item 12B, given the language and the seriousness of this, I am going to move this later in the meeting. I think that we could get done with the rest of the agenda and take this back up, because I want to make absolutely certain that I've got the wording correctly. And because I also know that not only will this, will the actual motions have questions from the council, but the wording, to make sure that we have it perfectly clear, is going to have questions. So, I want to be comfortable with how we're moving forward, and I know that out of respect for the time of at least one person here to testify on item 12C, and also getting done with what else we have, I am just going to move this to last in the agenda. So, item 12C is an approval of a memorandum of understanding with the early learner communities. We're going to our, go to our City Attorney Carrico for more information, unless City Manager Mack, do you want to kick it off?
No, sir.
So, council, what you have is a memorandum of understanding with, to be basically considered an early learner community. And early learners are basically your, and obviously, our spokesperson will elaborate more, but is before preschool. So, you're talking about really getting them started, giving just nationally with education and trying to get at these youth earlier. It's talking about getting them prepared for when they do approach kindergarten that they're not behind. And we were approached by the, what do we, Human Service Agency or part of?
Cottington County Connects is now the title of the organization.
Thank you for correcting me, because yes, Cottington County connects. And so, we, the mayor, myself, the city manager's executive assistant, we met with the group and thought it was a good thing and did some research. There are South Dakota guidelines from the Department of Education on early learner. So, this memorandum of understanding is basically allowing us to kind of put that work group and get that project more momentum, and also be able to apply for grant dollars when, when and if they become available. I've already reviewed the MOU and did some tweaking, and it is good to go unless you have any questions. And it's also been reviewed by the State's Attorney, because the Cottington County Commission will also be a part of that, as well as the school district. And I'll stand for any other questions.
And I know that we have someone out here who would like to testify, so just please identify yourself for everyone.
Hello, I am Audrey Ryder. I work for SDSU Extension here in Watertown at the Regional Center. I'm an early childhood field specialist. I am talking on behalf of the Early Learner South Dakota Group and getting this going with a memorandum of understanding. I will be a navigator with this group, and so that means that I will be working with this group of city, county, school district, and others that Sarah Faust and Cottington County Connects and I identify to work on this memorandum of understanding and get this, this going. I just wanted to real quickly kind of tell you a little bit about this. Communities are doing this because we are trying to focus on early learning and focus on a citywide aspect of early learning. It actually goes off of the National League of Cities and their assessment tool, and so we will be using four parts of that: community leadership and commitment, quality services that work for all young children and their families, neighborhoods where families can thrive, and then policies that support and are responsive to families. So, those four assessments will be built into this. We call it the LCAT tool, or the Early Learning Community Action Tool. And by signing the memorandum of understanding and getting this submitted, then we can move forth with this process and continue working to become that community. And as Lisa said, there will be opportunities for grants and things probably in the future that then this will help us become available for those.
Thank you. And I'd like to just say a few things, because I was in on every meeting. First, I'd like to thank Mallory Towell. She was in all of the meetings with us, helping out and moving this forward. I just want to make it clear to the city that because this is an MOU, we are not at risk, we are not in, under obligation or have to do something. It's more just an agreement among different organizations that we are going to try to find good answers to this issue. And it does have the possibility of potentially really helping Watertown, because this is a new process, but this is a process that a lot of communities are undergoing to try to address the, I think it is safe to say, the crisis of childcare and especially for the very young children. And this has already been bringing in different organizations in the town, different voices to all be heard. I can say that we have had discussions with Watertown Development Company, Boys and Girls Club, lots of other organizations, LATC. So, there is a lot of people already at work on this to address the larger issue. This is just one piece of this puzzle that hopefully can move us forward. And that's all I have to say about that. So, with that, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the MOU. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Jerns. Open it up for questions and comments. All right. Hearing none. The motion is to approve the MOU. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting, Audrey.
Yep.
Item 12D is an approval of advanced purchase agreement for a 2025 Caterpillar 826 landfill compactor via Sourcewell Contract to Butler Machinery Company in the amount of $1,282,000 and to surplus one 2020 Caterpillar 826 landfill compactor for a trade-in value of $485,000. City Manager Mack?
Thank you, mayor. I will defer to Assistant City Manager, Public Works Director Von I.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, manager. So this was an item we discussed at the last city council work session. It's a rather large capital improvement purchase that's planned for 2025. The solid waste superintendent has worked extensively on current year fiscal year '24 purchases. And in that process, in talking with the vendors and gearing up for lead times, long lead times to get equipment, like we're realizing on most anything that we purchase of this nature. He was able to solidify some pricing in 2024 for a 2025 compactor unit. In doing so, we estimate that could save the city somewhere between $40,000 and $70,000 by locking in a purchase agreement right now in 2024. And it also locks in a trade-in value of nearly half a million dollars. It's $485,000 for our current unit that is at the landfill. If you recall in the work session, we were leaning towards not trading that second piece of equipment in after finding out what the actual full trade value is being offered. Looking at the overall solid waste fund, we felt that it was probably most beneficial from a monetary standpoint, from a budgeting standpoint, operational standpoint, all those aspects, to go ahead and trade that current piece of equipment in to realize that nearly half a million dollars cost savings on the new piece of equipment. So with that, I speaking on behalf of Superintendent Davis, who's not here tonight. But he and I are both in unison on this opinion of trading in the current piece of equipment. And that's why I've proposed this way to the council tonight. This would lock us into a purchase agreement. None of those funds would be spent until January 25 at the earliest. So during this upcoming budget cycle, we would know going into that that these dollars would be earmarked in the '25 budget for the solid waste fund, which of course is its own enterprise fund. It does not impact the general fund at all, or the 212 capital expenditures. It's all housed within the solid waste enterprise fund.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the purchase agreement on a 2025 Caterpillar and the surplus of the current 2020 Caterpillar. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Peters. Open it up for discussion, council. Councilman Shetty.
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, during the work session, we did discuss, you know, keeping it potentially. But yes, I understand with the almost half a million dollar value. What's the, the warranty or the, you know, as far as, one of the things discussed in the, in the work session was downtime. It really does affect us when they, when this, we only have this one machine, this one unit. So if it does, if it were to go down, it, that's why the thought was to keep the old one because it affects the landfill and the compaction and everything. And so, but I can, I absolutely agree with this half million dollar, $485,000 trade-in. But I just want to guess, get to the question of warranty, how long is the warranty? And I guess, do we understand even how long it takes to fix something if, if it does go down? Not having two units in, in our fleet, I guess, just if you could answer that question.
Director Von I or City Manager Mack?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, councilman. The, the warranty, this purchase price includes the standard 12-month warranty and then an additional extended 10,000-hour warranty on the machine. It also includes a routine maintenance package and also some GPS guidance mechanisms mounted on the machine to optimize the compaction and the tracking of it to be most proficient with that process. As you heard from Superintendent Davis at the last meeting, that optimizing that compaction, that material is paramount. It's, it's very critical. When we're not able to optimize that compaction, we're losing that airspace, if you will, that we're otherwise selling to bury refuse in our landfill. So it's lost revenue, the least, the less compaction we have, it's lost revenue or space that we can sell. So optimizing, that's very important. Now, the downtime, I, I would have to say that's just very dependent on what breaks and, but I can say, I think that the response time from our industry vendors, in this case Caterpillar, is fairly responsive. And they're able to get on that type of work in a pretty quick manner. The last breakdown we had was a pretty extensive, unique kind of breakdown. And it took, I think Superintendent Davis, at least a month, if not longer, to get that repaired. But, so it really does depend on what breaks in the lead time for parts and availability of those types of things.
Councilman Shetty? Council, any other discussion on this? Councilman Danforth.
Mr. Von I, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but what, is there a way to even, to quantify a day, a week, a month of not having a machine like this? What that means to us cost-wise? You know, I can envision that, okay, we don't get the compaction. But how do we translate that to dollars? Because as Mr. Davis had said, you know, at least he's aware of, I think twice, that it'd been down for a significant period of time. The last one was that 30 days, 45 days, whatever it was. What does that mean to us in regards to, how's that relate to dollars? Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, there, there could be, you know, just be sitting down and going through calculation to figure out what that might be. Now, how we collect revenue at the landfills based on tonnage? What you would do is equate an approximate volume on a per ton basis and then look at the amount of compaction or lack of compaction, depending on whether that piece of machinery is running or not. And then compare those two different spaces of volume that the trash takes up essentially. It's going to take up X square or X cubic yards of volume if it's compacted. It's going to take Y square yards of volume if it's not compacted. And then just back calculate that out based on the cost per ton. So it's, it's doable. We have not cranked through a calculation like that. But, and it would be an approximation based on the material being hauled in, of course.
Because really it comes down to, do we fill up our cells quicker when we don't have it, which we know we do, right?
Correct.
So it's, what's the value of that compared to if we are doing the appropriate compaction? So I understand the difficulty. I'm just kind of curious in my own mind. And I think that's where Councilman Shetty is coming from, is that, what does it really cost us to not have one for a week or a month, whatever that is?
All right. Council, any further discussion? Hearing, hearing none, the motion is to approve the advanced purchase and surplus the current Caterpillar. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler? Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerns?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shetty?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Council, I know that I've already changed the agenda once, but I am now comfortable with the wording to go back to the motion. And since I know that there is at least one person here who would like, who has been waiting for us to take up item 12B, I am going to go back to 12B, knowing that we also have the item from consent calendar that we pulled. But 12B is a council approval. Yeah.
I just wanted to say something, one thing when you start.
Yeah. Yeah, if you would come up. So the motion will be, there's going to be twofold motion. But we are going to discuss it as one. So the first motion is going to be, and I'll just explain both motions and then I will ask for a motion on one. So the first motion will be council approval of the building permit extension. The second motion will be to waive the half permit fee associated with the building permit renewal. So those are going to be the two motions. But with that said, in order to take this up, chair needs a motion to approve the building permit extension and infrastructure improvements associated with the building permit. Motion made by Councilman Danforth, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Okay, Mr. Drake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, just for a point of clarification, when I wrote this letter, it was about, the permit is for getting the road completed, getting the, the curb and gutter, getting the sidewalk in. Because that is not normally a building permit item, if it were, it'd be like $175,000 or $200,000. And I think your building permits on this one were like about 3% of that, which would be about 500 bucks in a, opposed to 14,500 or whatever it was, that number. So that, that was the point that I made. If, if, you know, it just seemed excessive for, for what was left. But thank you.
Thank you. Council, as I said, we can have complete discussion upon both motions, but we are under council approval of the building permit extension. But you can ask questions and comments on both. Yeah, there was a motion made by Councilman Danforth and seconded by Councilman Tupper. So, Councilman Shetty?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, so on the fee part, I guess I do have a question on building. And thank you for your, Mr. Drake, for your, your question. Like that was my question was, well, what's the scope of what's left? Are we billing the entire project? It's all pretty much done. So we just got a few details to do at the end. Why are we going back and doing the building permit on the entire project? So that was my question, I guess, from whomever it may be, on how we go about doing that. What's the, what's the purpose of a building permit fee? What's included in that? You know, with the building officials that get involved and whatever, all the process that we have as a community to, or as a city staff to work on projects. That was all pretty much used up, you know, in the first building permit. So just why would we tack the same amount on? What's the, what's the value or what, yeah, what's the purpose for that amount for the second time through?
Director Von I?
Thank you, thank you, mayor. Thank you, councilman. I think Mr. Drake did a good job at teeing up the logic on why an exception could be made in this case. Most building permits don't include an extensive amount of public or private infrastructure. It's yet to be determined whether Stony Point Trail will become a dedicated public street or not. They're a little bit in review or assessment of whether they want to do that or retain it as a private road. But it is a rather long driveway to access these condos. So that was included all in the building permit package. So not only the structure, the condos that are of a sizable valuation that are used to set the building permit fee, but also this other ancillary infrastructure, some curb and gutter. The main stretch of Stony Point Trail is going to remain a rural street section. It will not have curb and gutter. But there are some storm sewer components, some sanitary sewer components, some sidewalk right up adjacent to the condo structure itself, along that street frontage there. So generally speaking, the building permit fees that we normally see are set based on the valuation of the building. They are set that way. And the logic behind assessing half a permit fee for a permit extension is in theory, staff, the city, you're, you're going through all that extra time to perform building inspections, to certify things are being complete according to the building plans. Now, in this case, the remaining items that Mr. Drake cited are more on the infrastructure side. The building is complete. The only thing keeping that from a final certificate of occupancy are these infrastructure components. There will be some staff time. The engineering staff will go out and look at these infrastructure components, but not as extensive as building permit inspections. So that helps answer your question. That, that would be a point of logic as to why amend this permit renewal to some degree, whatever the council felt appropriate.
All right, yep, thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Jerns?
I have had some constituents reach out on this, asked a couple of questions. Are we repaving parking lot? And their really questions were related to changes that were originally applied for. Is the parking still a, is there still enough parking based on changes?
To my knowledge, yes, the parking is adequate, meets the requirements for the building use.
If they were here, they would argue against that because the parking lot's been full. And now there's, they've done the statistics. I can't tell you that they're, I'm not going to try to verify if they're accurate or not. But are there parking lot upgrades that we will be approving that they're a part of, of this tonight? Because there are now seven VRBOs is what they did for a number. They searched VRBO and Airbnb themselves. And the occupancy is, is not full, but those parking spots have been maxed out, just in the summer, of course, but.
Now, I guess, Director Von I, is the parking lot actually germane to the topic that we are discussing here?
It is, it is not one of the remaining items to be complete, no. It, it meets what was applied for under the billing permit that was issued.
So Councilman Jerns, I would say your concerns are noted definitely, but they are not under the scope of the motion as written tonight.
This wasn't my concern.
Yeah.
It was a resident.
Yeah. And, yeah, well, actually, the concern that you related, so.
All right. And then I do have a neighbor, or multiple neighbors, that have been concerned about a couple of other things related to flying of garbage and construction containers that are still on the property. The garbage has been an issue and they're wondering when this is expected to be finished.
Councilman Jerns, I would say, I would ask you, unless it has something specific to do with the extension of the building permit, to save the comments, because the extension, well, unless, okay, actually, I will, I take that back. Director Von I, is there anything in the extension of the building permit that would affect the pickup of garbage or the parking lot? I think, let's say, Councilman Jerns' concerns, because if they don't follow directly under the scope of the action, then I would ask him to make the comments at the end of the meeting after this has been voted upon. But if there is any impact upon the garbage, like, let's say, the pickup of the garbage, because if you're going to build the road, obviously, a better quality road might lead to better garbage pickup. I'm not exactly sure. Councilman Jerns, you please tell me if, I, I want to make sure that your concern is, or the concern that you are relating from a neighbor is being addressed.
I am doing my best to read through this again. But there were questions from a resident, they're not my comments, first of all.
And if I could, mayor, ask a question too. The concern regarding the trash, I assume that's the refuse collection of the residents? Or is that like construction debris that you're referring to that's the concern?
I will actually bring up Mr. Drake back to the microphone. He might know more about this.
So the condo units built out there were white walled. And into that white wall, there were different contractors that came and built out the different units. So for example, Lynn or, or one of the other residents, I mean, Councilman Jerns.
Thank you. Good.
Or one of the other residents would have hired somebody to come in, build out their unit. And then there is a waste disposal area for constructions that, so that it doesn't go into the residential garbage. That residential, that waste construction is setting down in the corner of the parking lot. And that's what they're referring to because the wind picks up and will carry up oxer, or debris out of that, that construction. We do go out and pick it up, but it's, that's usually a big spring project here now, but, yep.
Does the building permit extension impact it at all? Because I could say, if you're building, if you're extending the building permit, then aren't you going to have more?
No, each, each of these units, they go in and get an additional building permit to build them out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep.
Councilman Jerns?
I'm good for now.
Okay, Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, mayor. This question is for Public Works Director Von I. Have we, in the past, do you recall if we've waived the, the renewal of a permit fee before? Have we done that in the past?
I think one of the only other permits that come to mind in my nearly six years here would be the Olive House. And I believe we assessed that permit renewal fee. Again, the circumstances wouldn't be apples-to-apples comparison because the Olive House doesn't have the expansive amount of what I would call public. have the expansive amount of what I would call public infrastructure like this building does. Again, the point being, the structure work is mainly complete or is complete, and it's the road and the curb and gutter and the sidewalk stuff that's yet to be complete. That wasn't the case on the Olive House. On the Olive House example, it was the structure that had the brunt of the work left to be done and not a huge amount of public infrastructure. If that helps make sense. But that's the only other comparison I can think of that we've done in the last few years.
Councilman Danforth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make up some numbers here, so help me out. So, the number I heard was 11.6 million, and that's the number that was used to calculate the original building permit. Is that approximate, give or take a little? And from that, then the building permit amount was the 14-something?
Actually, the original amount would be twice that, so almost, almost $30,000 was the original permit. 14.5 being roughly half.
Of that 30,000, of that 11.6, let's just say, was, is that 11.6, does that number include the cost of roads and sidewalks and everything? Or is that just the structure that you have the building permit on?
I'll chime in, I'll let Mr. Drake chime in as well, but I believe that'd be the cost of the whole project that was under the one permit.
No, the road and otherwise were separate.
Okay, thank you for the correction.
Which are not subject to building permits, correct?
In this case, it was, because we did not have an associated plat or development agreement to execute with the project, so they were tucked in with the building permit.
And I'm just, again, I'm just asking here, because it just seems really odd to me. It really does. I, I think the request that Mr. Drake has put before us is reasonable. If Mr. Drake was the developer, not the one to build the building, but he was going to come in and put these roads in, curb, gutter, parking lots, he was going to do that, and then sell that land for somebody to come in and put that building up, would he have paid a building permit to do that type of infrastructure work, which is basically what's left?
No, he would not have.
Okay. So my question then is, why are we doing that now? Just simply because it was tied to that one? And I appreciate, you know, I think Heath, you kind of alluded to that a little bit, that it justifies not doing it. And I think it does justify not doing it, because under different scenarios, different circumstances, it wouldn't have been paid. I think we go with the extension. I think we forego the fee. It seems reasonable to do such. That's where I'm at on it.
Director Tupper? I mean, Councilman Tupper, sorry.
Thanks for giving me, thanks for giving me a new job. See you later, Heath. One question for Mr. Drake is, so, when somebody comes in, they buy a unit that's not finished, they have to come to the city to get a building permit for that unit, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I guess that answers my question, so.
All right. Any further comments upon the entirety of the topic or the specific motion to approve the building permit extension? Councilman Danforth?
I think the one question I have, and I apologize for coming back to this, but when we do this extension, what's being requested in regards to the duration of this extension? Are we going to sit here, it's going to be this summer? Are we going to sit here two years from now? Where's the end that comes with this extension?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Councilman. And I don't know if Mr. Drake wants to speak any differently to this, but I'll reference correspondence that was received by staff that generally outlined the curb and gutter being complete in May and June of this year, the second list of, lift of asphalt being complete by September, the associated plat or dedicated public access easement for the roadway also happening by September. And then some of that utility work, manhole adjustments within the roadway and things of that would be complete by the end of April. And there's some ancillary storm sewers. So it sounds like by September of this year, the punch list would be complete. I don't, and then you bring up a good point. I don't know if you want to put a one-year extension deadline on this application, because that is otherwise left, would that default to one year? Yeah, it would default to one year if, unless otherwise stated in your motion.
All right, thank you. Counsel, any further discussion? Okay, the first motion is, counsel is to approve the building permit extension. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We're on to the second part of this motion, which is counsel approval to waive half the permit fee associated with the building permit renewal. Any questions upon the wording? So the motion is to waive it. Any further comments on that? I will consider this as under the original topic, so I will ask you to call the roll. If you are in favor of waiving the...
Yep, you need a second.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes, I do need, I need a motion to waive it. Made by Councilman Jerrons, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Thank you. So, the motion is to approve the waive, the waiving of, or let's just say, waive half the permit fee associated with the building permit renewal. Any further discussion on that? All right, if you are in favor of waiving the fee, you will say aye. If you are opposed, say nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Okay. Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. We're on to item D from the consent calendar, which is authorization for the finance officer to issue a special check for the down payment in the amount of roughly $31,000, and for the fabrication shipment of the equipment in the amount of $27,000. Payment is for the contract with Mini Ninja for the Ninja Cross system at the Watertown Family Aquatic Center. City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a carryover item from previous budgets. We do allow, or the council approves annually, a list of capital carryover dollars with associated funds. You may recall that, oh gosh, three years ago, there were plans to renovate the Lazy River area, the Rock area, under the previous director. That project never really got off the ground, continued to carry over the funds after Dusty came on board, took a look at that space and what was planned, and proposed some other options to the Park and Rec Board, including this, purchase of this sort of Ninja Warrior course for the pool. And the park board is recommending approval of this, and I will stand by for any questions, as will Dusty.
Director Rodick, do you want to explain what a Ninja course is? Or do you just want to come back and kill us in our sleep like a Ninja would?
No, thank you. In your packet, there should be pictures of those in there, but, yeah, essentially, it's a, it's an obstacle across the pool that will allow people to use upper body strength or what have you without fear of injuring themselves, because if they fall, they go in the water.
There might still be injury.
Possibly.
Sorry, Director.
I was going to say, we've got lots of people that want to be first.
Yeah. All right. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize the issuance of the special check. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Councilman Danforth?
Thank you, Mayor, and Ms. Mack. I'm the one that requested this come off the consent agenda. I'm okay with what we have, what's being proposed here. The process is probably what I'm more concerned with. These dollars were budgeted, discussed for a given item, and that item didn't occur two, three years ago, whatever it is. It bothers me that, because we didn't do that, we just automatically carry that over and feel we have a right to those dollars. That's really what it felt like, especially when it's in a consent agenda, not in the regular agenda. Because the first thing I did is go back into some of my budget books, and I don't see anything about a Ninja. So, it warrants discussion. It wasn't budgeted. The dollars were for a different topic, different issue. To me, that justifies at least a discussion or consideration by the council versus an automatic consent agenda-type item. And that's my purpose. And I think Dusty has given a good description of that, City Manager Mack has given a description. So really, my concern really is really more about the procedure and the process used to get to this point and understanding it, more so than the actual item itself, so...
I understand, and like I said, I will take that on myself. You know, this is basically a process I've used in the past. There was no thought of having, you know, ownership of those dollars. You know, a little bit of background, like I said, I got here in fall of '22, saw that there was, you know, when I saw it, it was aquatic center improvements. Subsequently learned that it was related to a Lazy River project, that, you know, everybody has their own opinions, but, so I just spent this last year evaluating the need for the original project, you know, based on, was it really needed? What would the return on investment like, you know, beyond that? Research some alternatives. Again, that's, that's the type of process I've used in other communities, so I will, I will take that on me. You know, in the future, we can do that a different way.
City Manager Mack?
Thank you, Mayor, and I can elaborate on the process a little bit more, as can Finance Officer Bobzine. But annually, we do bring to the council, in fact, it'll be coming the first meeting of May, the proposed capital carryover. In May of 2023, council approved carrying over 221,000 for aquatic center improvements other than buildings. So that's where these dollars would come out of. They were not earmarked for anything specifically other than aquatic center improvements. And that's, that is a process that's been followed for quite some time. I think those carryover dollars last for three years. So, and that's based on state statute, Home Rule Charter, sorry, Home Rule Charter. So if there's a different process that you all would like us to follow, be open for discussion.
Councilman Beeler?
Thank you, Mayor. I will say that this was discussed at Park and Rec Board, and I think everybody that was at the meeting were, they were for these additions, so it was vetted pretty well there. Thanks.
Councilman Jerrons?
I agree. That's going to be a good addition. But Mike is, his comments are about the philosophical reasons on how we get here, and I, I'm all for Ninja. I'll be with you guys. Peters, you can lead us. Oh, you want to? All right. And that's really the feedback, six, seven, eight months into this position on city council, the feedback I get from the community is related to these types of things. So I believe it is good that we keep an eye on the money. That is one of what we swore to do. You know, some people have said we should handle money like it's our own. I don't believe that at all. We should handle with a higher respect than our own, and that is why we need to continue to ask questions, because everything that gets approved seems to be questioned. And that's okay. The dialogue's all right. And I think the dialogue is real healthy for our community. Over.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Tupper?
This is kind of a joint question between me and Councilman Beeler. We went off to wait readings, that'd be enough for us.
The GVW?
I'll take the fifth on that one.
Randy, one at a time. If it's you and I, it's one at a...
Yeah. And before I let Councilman Danforth speak a second time, I'd like to say thank you to Councilman Danforth. And Councilman Jerrons, your comments were spot on. We should never apologize for being cautious on spending the public money. We don't ever want to give that impression that we are cavalier about it. Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to just make a statement. I want to clarify, you know, my concern here. I don't believe in any way, shape, or form that anybody did anything intentionally wrong or mistake. It's just that, it's just a good discussion point. I appreciated the mayor's support and City Manager Mack's support of pulling this and getting it through discussion. But I will say, Dusty, that I think City Manager Mack is quite upset with you, because she can't even say your last name correctly. But, no, I think she's fine. No, it's a good thing.
Nobody can.
I do, like I said, just procedural, and again, not pointing any fingers, it's just maybe a better way to do things business-wise.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Motion is to authorize the issuance of the special check. All those in favor will say aye, opposed say nay. Officer Bobzine, please call the roll.
Tupper?
Aye.
Beeler?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Holene?
Aye.
Jerrons?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. We are on to item 13, City Council Member Announcements and Introduction of Topics for Future Discussion. Councilman Tupper?
I do just have one, one quick announcement. I did attend the District One Municipal League Meeting on the fourth held in Sistin. Pretty good meeting, a lot of good things came out of it. Some of the main things that were talked about is some of the laws that were just passed. Probably the two pertaining to Watertown the most would, of course, be our 911 surcharge that Bill passed, that will, I guess I didn't ask when it was going to go into effect, but July 1. Another one, which, which I'm not saying we have a problem with the dispensaries here in town, but it did give the police, the local police or sheriff's departments the authority to go into any medical marijuana dispensary to check on them, so just like they do with a liquor store or a bar. Come out, we're going to host next year's meeting, so anybody who wants to help me, they can just jump in, so that's all I got.
All right. Any further topics for announcement, or topics or announcement? City, Councilman Jerrons?
The community just loves it when we start digging into CL, and we have a committee. It would, we've had a lot of comments, requests, ideas. We'd like to continue that, instead of us, you know, needing to reach out to let them know we're involved in this. There's at least four that are, that have signed up. We are still working planning commission to get more, and I would welcome emails. I would welcome dialogue if we meet on the road to discuss where you have seen Lake Compeska go, and if that's the path you want to continue. A lot of the comments are coming from people who have read the Lake Compeska master plan, and we'll see. But that, I just thought it'd be good to continue. A lot of those that reach out to us do listen to this, quite intently, by the way.
And Councilman, have you, oh wait, Councilman, have you met, or what, do you, because you said like four people have reached out, I mean, are they coming to talk to the committee?
This is council and planning commission.
Yep.
Yeah. This is the committee.
Yeah. Okay.
Which was talked about it.
Yep, oh yeah, yeah, definitely. I was just wondering if there was...
No, no.
Okay, all right. Councilman Tupper?
Just one quick thank you for, Councilman Jerrons and Danforth and Peters for taking on that roll. I know it's going to be a big process that you guys are digging into, so just want to give you a big thank you for that.
All right. Any further topics or announcement? Councilman Danforth? Oh, the, the...
Spring cleanup?
Actually, I think if, the new, the question was on spring cleanup, and since I think the PSA goes out tomorrow, I'm, it's up to you, City Manager Mack.
It went out today, actually.
Officer Rehors over there had a PSA today that the police department don't want to drive a dump truck, right? I kind of got that out of your PSA. Don't go fast enough, or what? Go on the city's website, that's, should be on the city's website though, right? What's that? No, you don't have a CDL, so, okay.
I'm drawing a blank. What is this dealing with?
Well, you're going to have to go on the website and look at it.
Okay. All right, City Manager, report?
Mayor, I have nothing additional to report.
All right, and there's no reason to go into executive session tonight, therefore the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Beeler. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, the motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night, and God bless you, Watertown.